Oh, the September the 12th, 2011 work session for the Frankfurt Board of Commissioners to order. Would you, Kirk, please call the roll?
Mr. Wilder?
Here.
Mr. Haddon?
Here.
Mr. Turner?
Here.
Mayor Graham?
Here. All present and accounted for. Good day to everyone. It's been a long time since I've seen you. I recognize you. Okay. The first item on the agenda is citizen comments. Do we have any citizen that'd like to come forth and address the commission? Any none? Okay, move on. Next item is the discussion of the 10th agenda of City Manager.
Have you all had an opportunity to look at it? I don't have any questions right now. I don't have any questions.
Okay. All right. No questions on that. All right. Next is the City Manager's report and staff comments.
Like to ask Mr. Mueller, are you ready to report? Are you having anything to report tonight?
No, we're good. Not the JLS. The JLS will pop up next time.
Mm-hmm. Okay. Mr. Hansel, you have anything?
Thank you, sir.
Rob? Bobby representing IT tonight?
We have it. We have it. Thanks, sir.
Okay. Chief, you have anything to report?
No reports, sir.
It was a very nice combined of Fire Department and Police Department commemoration service we had for the 10-year anniversary of 9/11. And it was very well done, and many people in the community commented about it.
About the parks and recreation and the cornets and cannons?
That's right. Mr. Jim, Kirk, you want to report on the parks?
Well, I saw most of you there during the week at some time, but the Cornets and Cannons Festival was a great success. Got to meet a lot of people, as did Jim did, from out of state. I sat with a guy from Texas at the Grand Theater one night, drove all the way from Texas just for this weekend and everything, and he'd had a chance to kind of drive around town, be around town, and couldn't believe how beautiful Frankfurt was. So, it's always good when you, you know, have nice festivals and events. It's a lot of work, as I'm sure, I know some of you know, when you're trying to organize something that big, and Bill, when you've got musicians, that takes a, took a lot of volunteers, but everything went well, and, you know, the amphitheater is beautiful, the ones that were there. I mean, I think we set it off in a good way, and the rain held off, so we're all ready to take a little sigh, nap and rest a little bit. It was a long weekend, but that was a great festival, Nikki and everybody that, you know, I'm not going to name everybody, but, you know, did a great job with it. Like I said, it's the first, hopefully, of many events we can have in Frankfurt at the Amphitheater. I think that's going to be a good draw for the, not just the Parks Department, but for other agencies that wanted to use that. So, you know, we were real pleased with it and hope to have many more events like that in Frankfurt. And what a good way to celebrate the Civil War, you know, sometimes the Civil War, but, you know, music is a good way to celebrate something. Everybody can enjoy music and enjoy the festival, so all hats off to Nikki and Russ and Mr. West for coming up with that good idea. And if you've got any questions, we'd be glad to answer them.
Nice work.
That's very nice.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
I had, as I was leaving the day, I saw a fellow in one of the gray uniforms, and as I do, I just said, hey, I just sent Michigan, I said, hey, thanks, you know, for y'all coming up to the park. And he gave me his card, and his name is Bob Backus, and he's the head man of the one on the Old Town Brass from down in Birmingham, you know, that was there. And then he said, I'll send you an email, which he did, and in this, he stated that his group, I think he said he's been in this group about 25 years, and going all over the country. And he said this was the best organized, you know, celebrational affair that they had attended, and he was highly, you know, complimentary of everybody here in Frankfurt. Of course, Nikki was saying, Nikki knows how to get people together, but he was, you know, very complimentary and stated that he and his wife intended to come back to our town and spend more time.
I think most people said it. They could not believe the hospitality, because Frankfurt's always been a very hospital town, so when people do come to Frankfurt, they usually come back.
Yeah. He did state that also. He said when they arrive on a Friday night, that they were given a little hoodie bag or something, and then they got on a bus and give them a tour, and they were, they're really very appreciative of what y'all did. Well, thank you.
Thank you, Jim. Mr. Donahue with HR?
With no objection from the commission, I'd like to add a few items to the agenda that aren't ready to go on it yet. The sewer department has been interviewing some plant operators, and hopefully that process will work out in the next few days so that we can get the names out there, and we'll add those, just to replace people that have left recently and get them back up to staff in there. There's another one, a clerical position in the Police Department that isn't quite ready. We're waiting on a ruling from the Retirement Board, and those will probably have the effective date at the end of September, assuming everything falls in place. And then in addition to that, you probably recall, a couple of months ago, the commission approved making conditional offers to firefighter recruits, and Chief Positsch has got six firefighter recruits in the pipeline that we've made those conditional offers to. We don't think they'll be ready to go on the agenda in September, that we'll put them on October's agenda, but we'd like to do October 11th as the effective date, since that's the beginning of a pay period. And I think the commission has already approved those offers, so I believe we're okay. Once again, we'll add it to the agendas without objection. The other couple, just quick things. Fred wanted me to give just a short report on the four-day work week. I know that's something we've talked about in the work sessions before, and we do have some additional employees that have expressed an interest, and Fred and I have worked with them, and we've done some scheduling things to give that a chance and see how it works out, and we'll evaluate it. The only other thing is just a heads up, and Fred and I have talked, I believe that we're going to have another work session next Monday, and on that agenda, we'll have, you probably recall, about this time last year, we had Chenault and Ho put our property, casualty and liability insurance out there in the market, and then we discovered that we had a three-year commitment to KLC that ran through this current year. So, Chenault and Ho has put that back out there again and got some bids, and they'll be making a report to the commission on property, casualty and liability insurance. And I'll probably be talking a little bit about health insurance, dental and vision possibly. We're going to have opening enrollment in October for January effective dates, and I've got some ideas on some things that I think need to be tweaked a little bit there, but we'll cover them next week. And that's it. Unless anybody has any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Donahue. Chief Positsch, Fire Department, we want to thank you also for your department's participation in the 10th anniversary commemoration ceremony. Did you have anything further to report today?
No, sir, nothing today.
Did you have your conference call with the Vice President of the United States today?
I did. Just finished it.
Okay. I hope you expressed the needs of Frankfurt.
I told him he needed money.
Thank you. Thank you. I'm sure he's heard that before. Mr. Scauff, welcome back from vacation. You have anything to report?
I'm good.
We will have a, we plan to have on our agenda next work session, the long-range plan for the Sewer Department. This is very important for anybody doing any planning that involves downtown Frankfurt in any way. They need to be cognizant of the sewer plan, because it's going to be, it's going to be a very big project. So, that's next week. Mr. Dawson, you have anything to report today?
Thank you.
Okay. All right. I think that leaves, Mr. Hackbart, I know you have several things today to cover on our agenda, so we might, you just want to wait to the agenda items to report unless somebody has a question that's not on the agenda.
All right. Next on the agenda is the old business. Do we have, you want to bring up any old business?
Commissioner Wilder? I've got two pieces, Mayor. I don't think I need to take much time. We've talked a few times about having some kind of commission-led staff meeting or something to that effect, just to get feedback from lower-level staff and from anybody within the city who would like to give us feedback on compensation policy in anticipation of renewing that discussion. I didn't know if any progress had been made on that front, and if not, what we need to do to move that forward.
If I remember the discussion, I think the discussion centered around improving staff morale, and we have started a plan to do that, and we're working through our department heads. We've taken some measures to try to improve morale, and we could have these meetings. There's some logistical barriers that we would need to work through, such as having larger venues and having some definite format for the meetings, so that they would all be the same, because with 315 employees, we would need to offer everyone, every employee, the same experience. So, we would be open to, did the commission want to serve as a sounding board or a panel, or would you want a facilitator? Would you want an outside facilitator like we did with the extension service?
I don't, personally, I don't, facilitator isn't much of an issue for me. What I'd like to is to give the employees an opportunity, not only as employees but as citizens, to be able to come and address the commission if they have any concerns related to that, to that particular subject. So, with regards, I guess, in a nutshell, with regards to facilitator or location, it doesn't make much of a difference to me, just whatever's easiest for the employees.
Sure. I don't, I personally don't feel the need for a facilitator per se. I feel that the mayor or you would do a fine job facilitating any meeting, and I'm pretty open to suggestion as far as location goes. In terms of the scheduling logistics, maybe it would make sense to hold one on a Monday 12:30 meeting, and to hold one on like a Saturday, and assume that most people would be able to make it to one of those.
Would you want all the department heads there?
I think anybody would be welcome there. I mean...
I'd like to ask a question. Now, is this likely to be like a one-time thing for one year, or is this going to be something you're talking about happening on a regular basis, or?
I don't know.
We do have a plan, we do have, do we not have a process for employees? I know what we're saying here, you'd like to have employees be able to come forward to the commission, per se, but, but I want to say, is this, if it's going to be just like a one-time, or how frequently you want this, or how that will affect what plans we have, what we have in place right now, where employees can go to, through their department heads, then from the department head to the city manager, that type of thing. I mean, I think we have to be careful about, that's my personal opinion. Not that I have any objections to, because I've had, since I've been mayor, I've had, I think it was four, three or four mayor's night in, for anybody to come, you know, and express things. So, I think that's something we ought to consider, if it, I'd just like to hear how y'all feel about that.
I guess, I guess in the interim, I was, at least for now, I was expecting this to just be a kind of one-time thing. I think part of the genesis for this were all the, all the folks who work in the public safety departments who are interested in setting up some formal line of communication, like meet and confer or something like that, and the thought that, in the absence of meet and confer, I think, I think a lot of folks would be happy to just have an opportunity to sit down and talk with us about this all regards, I mean, this, I think, I think, employees have just raised a number of concerns regarding compensation policy over the last couple of years, and a lot of them, you know, here, I mean, you've heard a lot of that, a lot of that's been in meetings in regards to longevity pay and the policy in general, standards for promotion, et cetera. And it's just kind of giving folks an opportunity to actually have that conversation with the commission.
Yeah. The, I think we'd be cautious, it's open, it'd have to be open, I would think.
Oh, it would, it would absolutely, I'm not...
To all employees, not just...
Of course.
Just certain departments.
No, we're not talking, I'm not talking about a formal meeting with a union or a meet and confer or anything like that. I'm just, just talking about a meeting where employees are, can be comfortable coming in and talking to us about, about some of their concerns, and kind of giving us an opportunity to all get on the same page and actually, actually kick-start a discussion that I think, I think it's something we talked about at the very beginning of the year, is wanting to readdress compensation policy, and it just seemed like a good way to start, is by hearing, start off by hearing from the employees themselves.
If anybody else needs to come in? So, you want to, what else you need to know here, Mr. City Manager? Follow this, follow this.
Well, I think department heads are concerned that employees might see this as an opportunity to circumvent the process that's presently in place, and certainly, we're going to do whatever the commission asks us to do, but the process that's in place now, if employees is satisfied about whatever, and expresses that through the process, it culminates with the commission.
I think it rarely reaches the commission in those circumstances.
Pardon?
I think, I think the concerns rarely reach the commission in those circumstances. And I, and I think it's pretty clear that there is a reticence to do this. I'm actually pretty aware of that, but I want to hear from the employees.
We can set up a series of opportunities outside of the commission meetings. Now, if we have a quorum, it will be a meeting.
It had to be a called meeting.
It'd have to be a, it'd have to be a called meeting.
And open to the public and all that.
Well, as a commissioner and as a mayor, I can meet individually with anybody, any employee, and have done so, and can, could bring that, as a member of the commission, could bring those concerns to the commission individually, and have a general discussion about that. I am, I have, personally have no, no reluctance to talk to any employee, but I just don't want to, I want to be careful now, that we don't, you know, there is a process that we have, and it, I just, we're cautious, cautious us to be sure that we want to take these steps and be sure we don't want to, there has to be certain type of discipline within an organization, in my opinion, in the process to come up, but I have no, I have no objection to having them come, but I just think we'd be cautious about making this a, like a routine thing. So, what do you, what do you, what do you have, Commissioner? What do you want to do?
I think, say we move forward with it.
Okay. Mr. May, you feel that way, too?
I don't think it hurts to do it. I don't know how much employees will really open up in a group setting like that, and we always have to be cognizant of the chain of command in the departments and understand that, too. I've always had an open-door policy. I mean, everybody knows that. It's, I mean, I don't know that it hurts anything, but if, if the city manager thinks department heads are happy with it, then we always run the risk of hurting the morale of our department. It has, it could almost go, shift to a different level of problems, but it's, if we try it and people show up and say stuff, we can listen to it and weigh the comments and just understand we're just getting information.
Now, do we want this, you say, to be a special meeting and not a part of a regular meeting?
Well, that's an interesting question, May. I think that's an interesting question, because if, if we're concerned about anything being pulled in to be discussed, it might behoove us to do it as a special meeting and say to discuss, where we outline compensation policy, so we can sort of put some sort of parameters around the conversation, so that not anything, and then we could also put at the end of that agenda, you know, no action will be taken at this time to assure that no quick decisions would ever be made, or anything, you know, from the, shooting from the hip or anything like that. It might be a protection that, that may make it a little more palatable for the members of the commission.
I think Commissioner Turner makes a really good point, and I think our city manager makes a good point in terms of maybe needing to relocate. So, if we were to do this on a third Monday 12:30 at a different location, that would inherently necessitate a special called meeting, because the location would change from the regularly ordained location. So, we could, we could do this in place of a regular work session, but with the set parameters of a special called meeting in a different location.
How y'all feeling about that? The, what the intent is, you want to talk about compensation plans, is it?
Compensation policy.
Nothing to the policy.
I'm sorry. Yeah, you know, for some reason, I was thinking it shifted to saying that anybody could come in and talk about anything. That's why I was saying you're on the risk of, as the city manager said, causing problems with department heads and supervisors, compensation policy, I don't think has a bit of a problem. I mean, in terms of talking, talking about, but I was thinking, did somebody mention just let folks come in and, I think maybe Commissioner Wilder said like the...
I guess I had to be open to the public.
Meet and confer and said that was, I think, and then I started thinking we were going on a different, so...
Mr. Moore? Is there any legal implications on this?
As long as the meeting is properly noticed, and I think certainly the commission can meet with the city employees. I think it is wise to list the subject, the topic of discussion. I think that's...
Okay. Okay. Okay, I think we're coming closer to a plan. I just need to know some detail. Would you want to do this in November, or you want to do it faster than that?
I'm pretty open to suggestion. I think, I see this as the, as the opening of a pretty long conversation. As I say, the sooner the better, but I could...
Maybe we can plan on October if it's not too burdensome for Fred and the mother.
Question. You said opening the conversation, meaning in that one meeting, a series of meetings?
As in, I expect, you know how we are, Mayor. I expect if we're going to tackle a subject as weighty as compensation policy, that we're all going to be discussing it, or it's going to take us a few weeks or months to hash through, to hash through anything, I reckon.
So, we're going to be having more than one special call meeting?
Oh, no. I expect, I expect it'll come up frequently in our work sessions.
Oh, okay, okay.
But it'll take, we're not just going to figure this out in one or two weeks and be done with it.
Oh, yeah. All right. Okay. Just want to be clear on that.
What, are you proposing that we compensate employees for coming to the meetings? If we, I'm especially thinking of, if we have a Saturday meeting, we're going to compensate department heads and employees who attend the meeting?
That's a good question. I wasn't, I wasn't, it hadn't even occurred to me to, to do that. I'd seen this more as something like the trash forums or...
Yeah, that kind of uses a voluntary thing.
Right. If people want to come speak to us about a concern regarding city policy, this is just a formal opportunity to do that. We had, we had lots of city employees who came to the garbage forum discussions, for example, who were off the clock, and I think, I think some of their concerns, or lots of folks in the Public Works Department who had concerns about how this might affect their, their actual employment, so they were there with that motivation in mind, but they were, they were there on their own, their own time.
Thank you. The will of the commission then, would, would the will of the commission be that these are filmed or videoed and available for the public?
That's always my preference whenever possible, but it's not a sticking point.
Were you going to have the meeting? That'd be a consideration.
Right.
Yes. We'd have to arrange that. Yes.
This one, you said we probably did in October?
That's what I suggested.
I was looking at mine. This is my chart. Toby, Brad's in labor.
Mr. Moore?
I was just curious, is there a reason why the meeting would not be held in this I know certainly you can't hold all city employees in here at the same time, but if you did hold it in this room at the end of a normal work session, or, or the voting meeting, then of course, it could be televised, and also, it would not be done as a special meeting, and I would think it'd be difficult to have all of the city employees in such a meeting at the same time anyway, because you do want some people to be providing services instead of everyone in a meeting, so that's just a consideration.
I think that one of the reasons that the special meeting may become popular among the board right now, and this discussion, is that it can really put parameters around the topic of conversation. If you have a regular work session, then you can, you open the door to a slippery slope there, I think. As I said before, the location doesn't matter much to me. Whatever would be easiest, you know, I feel like we can give Fred some leeway in there, and that whatever he feels is, feels is easiest for the city employees to make it, or is most convenient for them, then that would be ideal to me.
I agree. And as far as saving the meeting goes, I mean, all things being equal, I prefer that for the sake of transparency, but, I mean, whatever it takes to make this happen, I think is more important.
Thank you. That's, I think we have some plans, and we have enough to move forward on.
Okay. All right. Was it any more old business?
You have another one?
I did have one more piece, and I didn't, well, I didn't expect the last item to generate as much discussion, so we'll see about this one. The mayor and I attended the last, the most recent CACDC board meeting, and where they released a draft of the downtown plan that has been shared with, with the commission. They just, and they had a question at that meeting, and this was an inter- They just, and they had a question at that meeting, and this was an internal question among their board about the cost of the plan. It ended up costing about $3,000 when they were estimating a $2,000 cost, and they weren't clear on how much, if any, the, the city was going to cover of that. I believe in our resolution, we, we agreed to share in the costs. I don't know if there was any specific parameter set, but I figured I would, I would bring that up.
As I recall, maybe, Commissioner Turner, you addressed that when you said about $1,000 or so, what did you say, when you was talking to?
I think, if I'm racking my brain to remember the exact conversation, but I believe that I first tried to move to get that line struck from the ordinance.
Yes.
And then we received some assurances from Mrs. Marshall that the board, that it was there and although they had not formally voted on it, it was their board's full intent to incur all of the costs. And I believe as I voted to pass it, my comment was that it is my hope and my belief in casting this vote that CACDA or KCDC will incur the total cost of this plan due to the fact that, number one, we give quite a bit of money to that organization every year, and number two, we have been paying a loan that we didn't even know of. So I think that that gives us a little leeway to ask them to try to fit that into their budget as it was. I don't, I don't know where that is, as Commissioner Wilder has pointed out in the discussion with CACDA and their board, but that certainly was how I approached it when we voted on it.
That was my understanding. I know we did some discussion about the cost maybe being one or 2,000, but I do recall you stating what you just did, and I believe we approved it, didn't we not?
The resolution.
Yes, yes.
We didn't strike the wording out that we were the system, that's what I thought.
But, and the resolution isn't specific about what that, what that entails?
No.
I mean, I guess I would, I understand where Commissioner Turner's coming from. I guess I would still suggest that we split the cost of the part that went over budget, AKA that that, split the cost of the $1,000 and chip in 500. I mean, it's a negligible amount of money, but in terms of, you know, them being so accommodating of our, of our requests and so timely and just in the interest of maintaining a good working relationship, I'd be happy to pay 500 for that. But I can, that's, that's certainly the will of the commission, and I think Commissioner Turner makes a valid point as well.
How does the rest of you feel?
I don't say we pay it. We pay a lot already.
Pardon me?
I say no. We pay a lot for them already. I mean, it's not like $1,000 is a lot of money you're really asking for. Say have them pay it.
I hold my position, although, you know, if there's an issue where they feel like that they can't make it, if they provide us some detail about what those charges were, I would consider it, but at this point, I'm not. I stick to my original position.
Commissioner May?
I agree the way on it. I would say if the county wanted to split a third with the city and the county and CACDA, but it's not something that's going to really bother me one way or the other. You're at the meeting, city manager?
You go to the meetings?
I'm, I'm sorry.
You go to the CACDA meetings or KCDC?
I go sometimes when the mayor cannot go, but I was not at this particular meeting.
Commissioner Wilder and I both were there. The bill that was presented was in excess of $3,000. And for Plan Griggs.
For Plan Griggs?
Yeah.
It was the printing house?
There was some discussion by the board. Some, it was, one expression was that the board hadn't approved that. They didn't spend that.
That their board did not approve for them?
I think that was in reference to the fact that it was a little over budget.
Yes, and...
Percentage wise?
No, it's a lot.
Percentage wise?
I think we, personally, we'd give a little more information from the CACDA board.
Yeah, I mean, if there's, certainly if there's outstanding circumstances, then obviously, as I said just now, that I would consider it, but I, you know, I'm very, very, very hesitant to do it.
I think there was some discussion, Commissioner Wilder, you may, if you heard this differently than I did, please express it, but that maybe, that obligation, that financial obligation was done without the approval of the board, but of their board. And so therefore, there was no action, they took no action.
To pay for the bill?
Yes.
Wouldn't that, wouldn't that, until the CACDA board approaches us, wouldn't that be just an internal concern?
Oh, it is just an internal concern. I'm not, I'm not carrying any requests for it or anything. No, I was, I was just making a suggestion myself. No, no, they haven't, they haven't asked anything of us.
Oh, okay.
No. Now, who knows? Who knows how things will play out? They might. That's all. Just wanted to put it on the table.
Oh, you got old business, Commissioner here?
Yes. Chief Posage, within six new recruits coming in, do you have the new regulations that brought us, up to us in, was that February? Your employees ask for some resolutions to Chapter 17? Has that, has that been redone? You said you'd have it in August.
We had hoped to have it in August, but we have not yet completed it. Regarding the recruits section, there's not much that's going to change in that, in that area anyway, so we're hiring these under the current regulations that are outlined in Chapter 40. The concern that we had, that we've been through before is primarily regarding promotional aspect.
Okay.
And we hope to have that implemented before we start another promotional process, which will be late fall. So we hope to have that presented to you probably in the October meeting, yes. So we can start the promotional process probably in November or December.
Okay, so it's gone from May to August and now we're waiting till late fall?
Yes, yes. Too many things that have bumped it to the side. And it's not that easy. It's a complicated document, as you well know, from the review to it. And we're, and I'm working with the police chief, you know, we have to coordinate the two and the HR director, so it's not a, it's not a simple, down and dirty project.
Right.
So I apologize that we haven't gotten it done, but we are working on it.
Okay, thank you.
Any other little business?
I have another one.
Go ahead.
Okay.
Sure.
Been doing a lot of reading, and with the insurance, I can't recall, Randy, where we are with prescriptions. Do we have anything that covers what the prescription costs? I just ran across an article with the Kentucky RX Prescription Coalition. I don't know if that's anything that you've come across as well, that they're saving lots of money. The UK's in it, University of Louisville, Eastern Kentucky, the teachers retirement system, just Kentucky teachers retirement just joined them. They're also saying that other municipalities could possibly benefit from joining the coalition for prescription costs.
We had them come and make a presentation to us several months ago.
Oh, okay.
One of the things that they required that we were a little liried of was a three-year commitment.
Oh, okay.
When you committed to them, you had to stick with them for three years. And there's a lot going on in the drug market right now. There's a lot of drugs that are coming off patents next year, and we were a little bit reluctant to get, with it being so new, and we did some changes to our prescription program this time to try to squeeze some dollars out. We're pushing generics harder. That's going to start in November. We, probably after the first of the year, we're still working through some of the details, but we're going to push hard for 90-day refills, which we get tremendous discounts if we can get employees to switch to 90-day refills instead of 30-day refills. But just last week, we had a conference call with CVS, and one of the, one of the issues we ran into there was the program they recommended was limited to CVS or mail order. And I started doing a little bit of research. There's not a CVS in Shelby County, there's not a CVS in Owen County, and we have quite a few employees from over that, those two directions. So I was a little reluctant to lock them in or lock the city in to something that forced them to have only the alternative of CVS or mail. And so they're working on running some reports for me right now. They've got another program where the discounts are a little bit less, but allows employees to use CVS, Walmart, or mail order.
Okay.
And that I felt like maybe gave some more accessibility to employees, but did give us the opportunity to try to create some savings. It was a pretty good spend.
Right.
So we're, we're doing some things there to try to get that piece of it brought back in. But like I say, we had the coalition coming, and the only thing that verged us was that three-year commitment.
Right, I understand. And it's just, I'm just trying to figure out other cost savings and stuff. I didn't know if they had talked to you, so.
They haven't, and it looks like they're doing a good thing. Like I said, it was new, it's pretty untested, and we were a little lucky to lock in to something that hadn't really been tested yet. And we thought, well, let's maybe let some other cities be the guinea pigs, and if we can't get there and it's working, a year or two years into their implementation, I'm sure they'd welcome us as client and we can look at it at that time.
All right, thank you. And thanks for all your work you're doing with this. One more thing.
Sure.
We've talked a lot in Frankfort about splash parks. We also know in Frankfort, we lack any sort of indoor activities, that we don't have anything that actually promotes health 24/7 for indoor facilities or anything within the city of Frankfort. You know, we have the YMCA that, that does things, there's some churches that have some walking, indoor walking, but nothing that the city does. I didn't know if maybe we could start thinking financially of a way that we can actually start budgeting to actually build something for our citizens. Elizabeth Town was just written up in the New York Times on the 7th of this month to bolster family tourism fields and play for young athletes. Not to say this is anything that Frankfort needs to go this big, but they're building something in order to, to attract more tournaments, teams, tourism. Kids show up, parents spend money. Bottom line, as a parent, most of us are, you know, wherever your kids go, you're going to drop dollars. Anyway, Elizabeth Town's building 150-acre sports park. What they lack, though, is that it's all outdoor, so it's great that at summertime they can, they can boost it, but what I wanted to point out is that they, they finance it through a restaurant sales tax that they started in 2007. I didn't know if this is something that the city should start looking at, a way to start trying to finance. There's been talk for years to build something, but years have continued to pass, people continue to pass it, Frankfort as a place to live, because we don't offer things that they need for their family. So they live in a place where they have things for their family year-round. And that's, that's all I want to bring up, is just, can we look at, maybe start and try to look at financing, something we've talked about for years, but we still don't have? Even financing just the splash park that's, that's within the Parks and Recs Department, is there anything set up to actually finance to get that done? I know you have the plan set up, but there's, how do we finance to get it done?
No, it's a financial thing.
Right.
Yes. You're right. I can answer that. We did have a financial plan presented to us, I'm not sure what, it might have been 2007, 2008, that we can dust off and get updated from Ross Sinclair.
I seem to recall that being maybe even 2009 or 10.
We have another one again, okay. We think we updated again.
Yeah.
So we had a couple of those, but I'll leave it up to you. I think we've got that report someplace. Do you remember City Clerk?
It's ringing a bell, but...
We had...
And did that record how the numbers play out on bonding?
Mm-hmm.
Man, you know RJ Palmer?
Pardon?
And you know RJ Palmer? He'd helped put that together when Steve Brooks, before Steve left. I was talking, I was saying, Mayor, you know, you know, you remember RJ?
No, I don't.
Sandra Palmer?
No.
He's with, he's the financial part of them, they're here in Frankfort.
Okay.
I mean, they could update, I'm sure they could run the numbers. I mean, that doesn't commit to that company, they just did that because they've worked with us on some other things.
Commissioners, if, Mr. Dawson, is he aware of that?
I think so.
Is he aware of that study by Ross Sinclair?
I didn't see the detail, but I, I heard that the study had happened at the time, but I...
I think we have electronic.
No, no, I just not pretty that data.
Well, it's going to be a little bit outdated by a couple of years. But not, I mean, they can plug numbers back in. I mean, you don't have to use, you can use anybody, but they were real familiar with, with what we were doing. I think we'd worked with them from the Parks Department previously.
Yeah, Steve, Steve worked with me.
Okay.
I mean...
Does this answer the question?
My sense on this, I mean, the Parks Department does a very good job for us and they, and spend a fair amount of money each year on different projects and, and whatnot. They've got a pretty healthy budget. And I know that there are plenty of folks in the Parks Department that would love to see something like this happen. My sense is that if this were set as a priority with our, with the bonding options available, that we could, I suspect that we could actually squeeze this into the, into the existing Parks budget. It's just a matter of priority.
Perhaps we could get a copy of that last financial report and then that would provide, even though the numbers wouldn't be updated, it would provide us some important context to think about this in the report.
Mm-hmm.
Satisfy you?
Yes, I would like to...
Mr. Moore?
One other option available to the commission, of course, is a public referendum where you actually put tax on the ballot, where the monies would be used specifically for a recreation facility. Statutes actually provide for that.
Mm-hmm. That's good to know.
Then we try to find that, that report and share it.
Mayor, it was the number one priority after public, well, public safety building, then the aquatic center, and then after the public safety building was done, it was going to move up to number one. Then we got into the financial difficulties, and that's why things kind of, I believe the Parks, the Parks Board made it their number one priority?
Yes. And we actually in St. Louis and visited a lot, or like in Kentucky, visited a lot. Got a lot of good ideas, some things did work and some things didn't work.
Okay, it'd be good to get the report and see what it says.
We'll locate, we'll locate this.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other little business?
Oh, I have one more thing.
All right, go ahead.
It's funny to take a different turn, isn't it? I've been contacted by a few people in the community. Right now, code enforcement is not anonymous. I've had some people in the community who've wished to see if we could change that to where code enforcement would be, would again become anonymous. I don't know how the rest of the commission feels about that, or Mr. Mueller and his department.
Mr. Mueller, you...
Keeping it. I know we talked about it, but we haven't talked about it.
I believe it was December 2009 when the city commission chose to change that to, we used to allow anonymous, and then it was from December 09 to current, if the city citizen calls and is complaining, and if they feel threatened or fear for retaliation, they can just indicate that, and then we don't take their information. A lot of them have learned that they can just call certain commission members, and they'll follow through, through a workload process or contact the city manager and fill out a complaint that way. And then it's the commissioner's name and not the city manager's name instead of the citizen's name. But as far as the city wanting to... But as far as the city wanting to, City Commission wanting to change that policy, it's your discretion, we can go forth either way. Now that we're doing, we'll be starting our third citywide sweep. Hopefully, the numbers keep going down, and we're getting more compliance, and it should help with that, too.
Some of the thought process behind making the complaints anonymous in the first place is that the Department, and the folks working in code enforcement, were finding themselves acting almost purely reactionary, as in like spending almost all, spending almost all the time just reacting to the complaints that came in. And so, there were lots of concerns that clearly needed to be addressed, and that they felt needed to be addressed, and I think the Commission felt needed to be addressed. They kept getting set by the wayside, because they had to respond to all these complaints first. And to be frank, I think a lot of the complaints, especially back when they were anonymous, we ended up with lots of circumstances where the complaints didn't have to do with public safety so much as neighborhood disputes. And you would see lots of wars of attrition between neighbors and lots of folks.
Yeah.
Having some personal problem, or some problem like that with a neighbor. And so, that was just a way to kind of anonymously keep zinging them, and we're wasting lots of money and time just dealing with all that. So, part of the thought was, well, you know, we don't let all the complaints be anonymous, and that might limit some of, that might limit the number of complaints coming in to the stuff that actually is really more valid, and free up the, free up staff to actually go out and be more proactive about a lot of this stuff, instead of reactive. And, but I guess I wouldn't mind some feedback on how you think that's been working. I mean, it sounds like, I know you all have been more proactive over the past couple of years in terms of doing sweeps and things. Do you think that would be?
I'll have more information for you after the 28th of this month. Hopefully, we're getting our training on our new system, the software system, including people putting information in on the web to put in their complaint. But because I haven't seen it in several months, and don't know the final product, I don't know how we address anonymous in that aspect, so.
Okay.
If I could report back in October, I'd be happy to answer those questions, and have a little more information from our staff, and maybe some numbers for you on that.
Great. Congratulations on finally getting your software.
Yeah, we're down to scheduling the training now.
Have you exhausted yourself?
Yes.
Okay.
On the new business, I mean, on the old business.
Yes.
Anyone else?
Okay, now we're down to new business. Commissioner Wilder?
One piece, we moved our work sessions into this room from the other room, just for the sake of taping the meetings, because this is where the equipment is. I always certainly felt a lot more comfortable and conversational sitting around that table.
Me, too.
And that really came to mind when we held our last, our last work session was the joint meeting between the city and the county and the plant board out at the UK Extension Office. And, you know, our work session extended after the joint meeting, and I remember a number of folks during that work session commenting at the time, we were all just sitting around a table and talking, and the folks we were talking with would come and pull up chairs and whatnot. I remember lots of folks commenting at the time just how relaxed that was, and a number of good things came out of that conversation even. I mean, that's where, that's where Tom Bradley brought up the thought of taking the tax credit out of the fee instead of taxes, for example, which was kind of a breakthrough. I'm wondering if it would be possible for, and frankly, I mean, just sitting up here on these thrones, looking down at everybody, I mean, it's gotta be, I know that some folks are not entirely comfortable approaching us and talking to us, and you see it sometimes when people step up to the podium. You see folks who I wouldn't expect to be nervous, talking to the Commission, citizen comments and things like that. I mean, you know, coming up and clearly feeling maybe a little intimidated. I'm wondering if it would technically be possible for the work sessions to just pull, you know, pull a table up right here and to informalize the work sessions a little bit, instead of, instead of sitting on the pedestals?
I would like to be down.
Is that something maybe you guys could look at in IT, in terms of whether or not that's realistic? I think that's the only limitation for us.
This table here is terrible to have a meeting.
Yeah, it is.
In my personal opinion. I'm happy doing this.
What?
Like this, and of course, with that, this hearing loss, it makes it doubly, because you guys sometime mumble. But in a way, I personally prefer, you know, a place where we can see each other.
Sure.
I hear better when I see your mouths.
Yeah.
It's a personal thing. But I do think also, it's more contingent, I think it is more compatible with the people.
Yeah.
If we've got too much of a barrier between us and the people, that personally, I think. I mean, I'd love to be able to just sit around and talk with people.
Was that okay then? It sounds like the Commission's pretty interested in this, I guess we'll just have, I guess I can just look at how doable that is. Thank you. That's all I've got.
Would you still think about that?
Surely. As long as we can coordinate the technical part of it, and get the mics and the cameras, I don't think there'd be a problem doing what the Commission wants to do. Grab this space then.
Thanks, Fred.
In the more new business. Okay, Mr. Gold, we're now down to our discussion items.
Thank you, Mayor. I think at this point, unless the Department head has an item on the agenda, I think it would be safe to dismiss the ones who do not feel like they would be part of a discussion. Which brings us to our first discussion item. The, I'm sorry. Would you want to change the order?
I believe we ought to change the order, we've got some people here.
Yeah, that's. Is that okay with everybody?
Yeah, okay.
Okay, then we'll reverse the order, and we'll first ask Mr. Hackbart to come and introduce consultants that have been involved in the City Hall roof load-bearing analysis.
Yes, I've invited Ethan Buehl and Brian McMillan with VFMJ Engineers, and David Banks, who has been assisting us with putting together a bid package for a roof project. But last meeting, we discussed the green roof, and some concerns about the weight of a green roof on our existing buildings, and they've come, I believe the city manager shared the report with you all, as far as what their findings were, and they just, I'd invited them to come to the meeting tonight, and we discuss if you all had any questions concerning their report, so.
Hi there, my name is Brian McMillan, and I did a lot of, a majority portion of the legwork under the direct supervision of Mr. Ethan Buehl. And first thing I wanted to ask is, has everybody read the report, or would you like me to go through a summary of what it says real quick?
Because I don't have a copy here with me, because we've got digital versions, would you mind?
Okay, I'll go through a quick summary of what the report says. Basically, this building was initially, or has been added on to with several additions over many years. From our understanding and research, this was the initial building, and it used to be a mechanic shop. It has lattice trusses supporting the roof up here. And what we did was, we actually went up in the attic spaces, and identified what the sizes of the members were, and directions of framing, and analyzed the load paths of where green roofs would go, and to test if the members could hold them. What we came up with is the green roof weighs 38 pounds per square foot. The original roof design loads on the structure, in accordance with today's design, is the roof needs to hold 37.4 pounds per square foot for today's design loads. So, the green roof would double the design loads on, that the roof is intended to hold. What we have found is in a majority portion of the structure, the roof is adequate to hold today's design loads, and is pretty close to the threshold of adequacy. So, adding, doubling the design loads would add, would require significant reinforcement to the roof. You're looking at reinforcing the primary members, the trusses that are running this way, and reinforcing the roof joists that are running perpendicular to the truss for a majority of the roof. This would, this would require a lot of construction. Most likely, areas of the building would have to be shut down, or employees would have to be temporarily moved to reinforce those portions of the roof. The report goes into more explanation as to exactly what would have to happen, as far as the detailing of the reinforcing, mostly just adding more members in the roof space, which is hard to do under an existing structure. There is one portion of the roof, fortunately, though, about 400 square feet, that could be used for a green roof. It's not a vast majority of the roof at all. I'd like to pass this around, you all will, so that you can get an idea of what each portion of the roof is looking at. On that diagram just being handed out, the green portion is the portion that is currently adequate to hold an additional 38 PSF green roof system. You can go up there, you can lay it up there today, no reinforcement required. The yellow portion of the roof would require significant reinforcement of both the primary trusses and the secondary roof rafters. The yellow area with the green crosshatch marks, that is actually above this room here. It would not require as much reinforcement. It would require reinforcement, but the secondary members, the roof joists, are adequate to carry the loads. The primary trusses would have to be reinforced to carry the loads. The red area is over the plant board and the firehouse. That, according to our analysis, is slightly below adequacy for current design loads. That's no need for alarm. Older codes probably had more conservative, well, slightly different load cases, actually more liberal. Today's load cases are probably more conservative. And also, the species of wood, which we estimated a species of wood based on experience, it could be a different species of wood. Basically, that roof is just a few pounds per square foot under what the current design loads are. It's not a real concern to us at all, plus that roof has stood the test of time. One.
Sorry.
Well, if I want to get into the exacts, I have the, I have the exact loads of what that, of what that roof can carry, based on our analysis in here. Let me, let me mention that. It can hold 26.5 PSF, that includes safety factors, significant safety factors, and in accordance with today's design codes. The estimated dead load on that roof is 14 pounds per square foot, so it can, it can hold double the dead load. But once you put the dead load, plus the snow load, plus drift load, you get a design load of 34.4 PSF. Once again, that's slightly over what it can hold, but with safety factors, we feel confident that that roof is of no concern. But at the same time, adding an additional 38 PSF to the roof would require a lot of reinforcement of both the primary trusses and the secondary roof rafters. One important thing that we found is above the firehouse, there is a roof rafter that is split. It's a significant split, we have a photograph of it included in the report. Regardless of any decision on the green roof, that rafter does need to be repaired. I think the hardest part of that repair is gonna be getting to it, but the repair's not significant. Sistering, which is just putting another member alongside it and nailing it to it, will be sufficient for the repair of that member. And that's photo number one of the report, so. That's a summary of what we have came up with, so now, if you all have any questions, I'll be happy to answer.
Cost.
Oh, there was an addendum letter that I do not think has been sent to you all yet. Mr. Hackbart does have it now, I'm sure he'll be forwarding it to you all in the, coming soon. Basically, what it meant, it mentions is there's notches in the joists above this roof here. Some of those notches are not in line with current codes, looks like maybe existing plumbers or electricians, or somewhere in the test, in a long time, people notched the joists to make room for whatever they needed to go through. As a structural engineer, that's not good. So, what we have come up with is criteria that has to be met based on current code. We give a limit of the size of notch that's acceptable, and if notches are over that limit, they need to be repaired. You're looking at somewhere between 10 and 20 notches. I'm gonna estimate 15, but I want to give a range of 10 to 20 notches in this roof up here that should be repaired. And that's in the addendum letter. Matter of fact, I have a copy of that, I can, I'll hand that, just to give you all a printed copy, so somebody can have it. The following pages are pictures of the notches, so that you can see what we're talking about possibly needing repair.
I mean, you stand up, make the area for the green roof a little bit, it's a bigger print, so it's a lot bigger than what's shown on A11, but it's not very large of a roof.
No.
Approximately 400 square feet.
400 square feet. Structurally adequate to carry the additional 38 pounds and the snow load and everything. I know that's not what you wanted to hear, but at the same time, the majority of the roof is in good structural condition, except for some places that should be reinforced. We'd be happy to answer any questions. I will tell you, we didn't try to do an extensive cost estimate to reinforce it. We think it would be better for you to take the reports, give it to a contractor, and get some estimates that way. Just because it's, you're gonna be able to tell them that, okay, you could work in this area for a certain period of time, or certain days, and we don't know all that, what you'd be willing to allow them to do. I mean, you could come back and do all that work with you, but we wanted to get this report to you, because I understand the support to get this roof on for winter, so we wanted to get this done as quickly as we could.
Could, Mr. Hackbart, would you mind maybe give a reaction to this, how you, give us your best judgment of what has just been given to us?
I'll just throw out some ballpark figures. A new roof system, I think we talked about three different types of roofing systems, maybe a month ago, and they range from 70, 80,000 up to 150 to 160,000 dollars, to, and that's more of a membrane they put over the existing roof system. So, we have some different products that are different types of roofing systems, and that was kind of the ballpark cost we were getting back. And so, I guess the green roof system, I guess the planted roof with the plants, what makes it problematic is you have an existing building that you'd have to go in and do supports, tear out all the tiles to get in there and do the supports. So, it's kind of an unknown cost, just to do the structural supports that would be required. And then, when you add on top of that, the green roof, it might be 200 to 300,000 dollars, or more. We just, you know, it's hard to pinpoint a cost, so we do have existing leaks, we have, you know, in the roof system, the fire department, they continually have, we put buckets out when we have a lot of rain events, and I guess the concern is we're starting to approach winter, and we were hopeful to get some direction tonight, so we can get the roof addressed. We still have the grant, I think there's approximately 70,000 dollars in the energy grant, that these three types of roofing products are eligible to be paid, reimbursed. So, that would cut our cost by 70,000 dollars on any type of roofing system that we do pick. But I guess the concern is we're getting into fall and winter, and we still have some leaks we need to get addressed.
Okay, Commissioner Wilder?
I'm kind of seeing, seeing this in three different chunks, as per the outline we were showing here, the diagram we were showing. My two cents would be to, you know, for us to go ahead and authorize the repair of the section over the fire, fire station. That's what needs the most structural work right now anyway, right?
Yes, and that's just one singular member, just one wooden roof raptor.
Right.
That is just what, probably. That is just split probably due to initial defect in the wood.
And that's where the most substantive leaking is going on?
I'm not sure if the leaking is coming from that exact roof. I was on a ladder with my head sticking through a ceiling tile, uh, looking in the dark as best as I could with a flashlight. I'm not going to say that's where the leak is coming from. Uh, I didn't specifically see the leaky area in the fire roof. I saw some other areas where there was leak.
Oh, and I'm just saying that, that, that's, that's the roof that's leaking the most. As in the, most of the leaking we're seeing is over on the fireside, I think.
Uh, the greatest number of leaks is over in that area. However, when Andy and I were up recently, there's a seam that's wide open over here in this corner. I am surprised it's not leaking on someone because it's bound to be taking on water. So there are leaks scattered all over the place, but the worst is over the fire station.
I'm sensing the most urgency over the fire station. So my, my two cents would be for us to go ahead and, and get the ball rolling on that. I'd even say go ahead and get the ball rolling on the, on the other side too. And I guess I'd like to see us get a cross estimate on what it would take to get the middle section up to, up to par for a, for a green roof, so. At least to see what that, at least to see what that'll take. And if we do this in phases, so to speak, then we, you know, we wouldn't necessarily waste any time by getting those estimates because there's, there's plenty of work that we could go ahead and get, get started on in regards to the, the fireside. You said it was just the, you said, you said the secondary is fine up here. It's the primary that, that might, that we need some reinforcement.
If we're going to reinforce the area for the green roof, this area would be the most logical. The only, the only one slightly illogical thing about it is it is a barrel roof. It's curved up there. I'd have to talk to Mr. Banks more about, uh, the schematics of dealing with that. But as far as the structural, only the secondary members have to be reinforced, which means it would make most sense to reinforce this portion. Or the primary, primary, sorry. The trusses, the big members.
I guess I'd, I'd still be interested in seeing what that.
Does this have the best access to do the improvements to?
It actually has pretty good access from what I had seen. There's, it's pretty much all storage. Uh, you can walk around up there. The fire department uses one area for storage of fire equipment. I think another department uses it for filing. But you have pretty good access to most of the members that need reinforced. Um, might be slightly, there, I think there's about five trusses up there if I recall right. I think you have pretty good access to about four of them. And then one of them would be slightly difficult, but it could, it could be reinforced. And then also you're dealing with wood there. Other portions of the structure you're dealing with steel, which would require welding, which is always a fire hazard. Uh, with this being wood, we would try to reinforce it with wood members, so that would be, uh, or steel halted, but we'd try to prevent any welding in the existing structure of wood, which would mitigate any fire hazards. So this would be the most logical group, just like the earth.
Commissioner, tell me.
Yeah, I would just like to interject and say that I appreciate you guys for doing the report. I really do. What I'd like to, before I can make any movement to authorize anything, I need to see some harder numbers on what it's, I'd like to see, see it in options. You know, the various different roof options, including the repairs, the structural repairs that, that are needed, uh, with those. And also to see what the additional cost would be if we wanted to put a green roof just over this section. Is that something that we can get here in the next couple of weeks before the voting meeting?
Yes, we can put something together, look at some options.
Okay.
For just the barrel section of the roof, have that supported and.
I think we need to take a number of different options in so that we can make it, not just isolate it. I think a lot of the costs for the whole roof.
Were not provided in this report to really give you your answers.
Right. So I, I just want to get a better idea of what we're talking about because there are so many different options that we can do. Uh, I, I don't feel comfortable authorizing something without knowing what the cost breakdown is.
Didn't we get some of that information already?
It was very ballpark.
It was ballpark.
Commissioner, Commissioner May?
This had a question. Uh, in terms of cost effectiveness, does it make any difference if we schedule all the, all the work at the same time? And the beams, support beams, um, with the truss system, do those have to be all done? Can they be done in phases or would that make any difference from a structural standpoint?
Are you asking, you would, you would do one truss at a time?
Well, just the sections where the, I don't know how that, how it is up there, but where it is in the second, sec, center of the building where the city hall offices are. And then there's the firehouse, garage and the plant board offices that, uh, are the, I guess the red, the red section.
Yeah, the red is the fire.
And then the lattice part, the yellow with the green, which is the city hall part. Can that be done? Is it, I'd be interested about doing it in, in phases if, if it had to be done in phases anyway? If that makes any difference structurally or?
Yeah, I would say, I'll try to think how, what phase you could do it. Uh, I'm not sure because of the, we would not have to do anything but sister on some repairs in this area that you couldn't, uh, put a roof and then come back and reinforce the trusses later.
That's my question.
Put a green roof on, you know what I mean? Because you still have to put a roof before you put the green roof on. Is that correct, David?
Yes, that's correct, but the title of the roof you put down is going to be determined by whether you're going to end up putting a vegetate roof on.
Right. I could understand that.
And so that was my question. Would that have an effect on who was doing the work to do it all? Do they need to do it all at, I'm, I'm not done with it, so I.
Typically, you're talking about different contractors working either under a contractor or under separate contracts. Uh, we usually recommend that all contractors be working under one contract, so we got one contractor to look to for responsibility. The trouble with having multiple contractors, of course, if something goes wrong, they say, well, that's not my problem. It's somebody else's problem.
So that's what I'm saying, like in terms of like the efficiency of the work continuity, whatever you want, seeing all that together.
Yeah. I mean, you can't, you can break it up into, into pieces if that's what you want to do. I'm just saying that once you have a problem, usually it's finger pointing from that point on.
I, I just was saying, and if we, they brought up a point, it's like, hey, maybe we can and maybe we can't. I don't know. So I just wanted, I would love to see the green roof. I mean, I would.
Okay, go ahead, Commissioner, then I'll speak here for you.
This is a, a follow-up question and, and I might, I might be asking the same question Commissioner May is asking. Would it, would it be inefficient or more efficient or a wash for one contract, one contractor to do, the red section is one project, the yellow section is one project, and then the green section is one project in three phases? Or does it all just kind of need to be done at once?
Are we, are we talking about now the just structural repairs as opposed to the roofing?
Let's say the whole, let's just say the whole shebang for the second conversation.
Well, the, the roofing from my opinion would be better done all at one time.
Right.
You already have a partial situation because half of this roof over here has already been replaced with a plant board. So there's a tie, the new is going to tie into the old. If a problem results, we're, we'll already have a little bit of a problem. Okay, was it the roof that was already there or was it the new roof? So if you start piecemealing all the roofing, I'm just talking about roofing, not structural repairs, then that complicates that issue more.
I haven't been up there. Do they, I mean, is there actually a gradient difference between the sections? Do, are they level to each other?
No, absolutely not. I've got pictures if you want to see them. But this roof is, a, a, as Brian said originally, this was actually a complex of buildings and they did it infill and built on and added on. The roof up there is really unusual. There are all kinds of levels. It slopes in just about every direction you could take it.
I guess that's kind of my point. I mean, aren't those essentially three different roofs?
Uh, three different structures.
Right.
Yes. Actually, it's more than that. I think there's probably about three over here.
You can flip through each of these pages. They each have one picture of the roof. These are included with the report, uh, these pictures. That, that gives you an idea of what is going on.
Okay, uh, I'd like to make my comments. I know where I stand on this already, so. We need, the roof is in bad repair. It needs something done soon. We have additional studies cost additional money, right? If you do additional studies, it's going to cost additional money. We have at the present time seventy-five thousand dollars supposedly if we could utilize on this project, right? Uh, the estimate, cost estimate, uh, not counting the green roof, could be somewhere up to a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. That's what we said. I hear that. So maybe somewhere in that area.
It's going to depend on what quality of roof. I think in one of the earlier meetings, we, we were talking about the quality of roof and that would affect the cost. But now we're talking about at least some structural repairs.
Okay.
I would think that you would want to do that in, in the same contract. So then we're talking, and the cost is now getting greater. We haven't, we, because these decisions haven't been made yet, we haven't been able to give you those various options. But if you want, if you want those options, then that's our next challenge is to set out and put some figures to those.
Yeah, that, uh, maybe a couple of weeks ago. Now, I know that's interesting, the green roof. But a couple of weeks ago, there was an article in the paper about someone who.
Yes.
Built a green roof.
Right here.
And here in town and, and was talking about the cost of it. And how much, how the roofs had to be supported, additional support and things of that nature.
That building was new construction too.
Yeah, that, that was new construction though. So my question is, although I may not, I may be in the minority here, that while the green roof may be something that would like to show that could, we could have in our city under circumstances of present time, I, to me, it's, it's, in my personal opinion, fiscally speaking, you know, so just trying to use what logic I have, I would like to go ahead and get the roof and, and not have a green roof. That's my personal opinion. Now, I'm going to be in the bar, Commissioner Wilder, by the way, I got to take a leak.
I read, I read that article. I think it really missed the, the point because it failed to, that article failed to note all the substantive cost savings that come with green roofs. As in they, they lowered utility bills, they're better insulated and they last significantly, significantly longer than conventional roofs and therefore need less replacement. And that's not even counting the, the extent to which they mitigate stormwater, which is a cost for the city. So I think they're, I think, I think fiscally in the long term, they certainly make sense. That's kind of where I stand too in regards to the different materials. And we talked about this, you know, when this came up before. But in terms of, in terms of roofing especially, I mean, these are materials that really weather. They catch all the elements. They catch all the rain. They catch, they catch it all. And, uh, you know, there's an, there's a maxim in, in the roofing trade that the, the cheapest materials are always the most expensive in the long run. And that frankly, the more expensive materials are always cheaper in the long run. I mean, it would be, you know, it would, i- if we really wanted to look at the long game on this, I mean, the cheapest thing we could do is put a copper roof on this thing. It'd be astronomically expensive right now and then it would last, you know, eighty, a hundred years. If somebody didn't steal it. And I'm not suggesting that. We've got to, we've got to find that balance. But I, I definitely would not encourage this in the name of fiscal responsibility to skimp on the materials because that would be, that would just be another perfect example of doing what, what's easy in the short term and hurting and, and kicking the ball down the road and, and making things more difficult in the, in the long run. But that's also one of the reasons I think, I think it's still worth looking at the possibility of getting a, a, a green roof on that center section. And at this point, we've had this study done, so at this point, it seems that's just a matter of getting cost estimates, right? I mean, we shouldn't have to, in terms of getting a cost estimate to, to put a green roof on that, we shouldn't have to pay for that or anything. And in, and in terms, and I'm happy to, I mean, I'd be happy to go ahead and at least, well, I guess we can't, we can't formally take action in, in a work session. But I, you know, we can still give, we can still give green light things to an extent. I mean, I'd be happy to go ahead this month to at least go ahead and get the ball rolling on the beam that needs to be, that needs to be fixed.
And if I can clarify my earlier comments, I, I certainly am, am in support that we need, we need a new roof. And, and it's alarming that there are structural problems and those absolutely have to be taken care of. My hesitation to authorize now is because I don't know what the various costs are going to be for those different types of roofs that we're looking at, you know, the various materials.